Regular Village Board Meeting to order, everybody would rise to say the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board that keeps calling roll. Yes, here's.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. March?
Here.
Mr. Hack? Mr. Forsythe? And Mr. Cross?
Yes, here. Okay, we have approval or corrections to the minutes of the May 11th Regular Village Board Meeting. We have several meeting minutes to approve, should we do them individually or?
Yes, you should do them individually.
So, we have the minutes of the regular, of the May 11th, 2015 Regular Village Board Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Forsythe, seconded by Trustee Hupkey.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Can I vote?
No.
Present.
Present.
Well, part of the minutes, part of the minutes were the new board and part of the minutes were the old board. So, and all of the trustees were present for the entire meeting, so I would, is that?
Yeah, and in reality, even though it is customary for trustees who are absent not to vote on the minutes, the law does not require that the trustee, even if you are absent, you can vote on the minutes.
If you choose to.
So, yes.
Okay, and Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, the appropriations public hearing on May the 11th, 2015, the minutes of that meeting, are there any additions or corrections?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Forsythe, seconded by Trustee Hupkey.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes. The May 14th, 2015 Special Board Meeting, any additions or corrections? Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Hupkey, seconded by?
Present.
Okay, no motion?
No motion, present. Motion.
Motion by Trustee Hack, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee March?
No, you were there. About the 18th.
About the 18th.
Oh, we're on the 14th.
We're on the 14th.
That's right, you were there, that's right. That's okay.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Yes. Now, the May 18th, 2015 Special Board Meeting, any additions or corrections?
So, move down through.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee March, seconded by Trustee Jones.
Mr. March?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Present.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Present.
Mr. Cross?
Yes. Okay, so all the minutes. Accounts payable and payroll, we have pay period ending 4/25/2015 in the amount of $44,247.82. Accounts payable, general fund, $35,859.38. Water and sewer fund, $56,687.12, giving a total of $41,528.09. And then we have an accounts payable addendum that you were just handed. This is the interest portion of the Village of Peatown Death and Frigate Series for 2013. The due date is June the 1st. That would be for the amount of $62,197.5. Any discussion on the bills of payroll? Not a motion to pay the bills and the payroll?
I make a motion, pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Hupkey, seconded by Trustee March.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
And Mr. Cross?
Yes. Public comment and/or questions on any non-agenda item? We will move on to reports of the committees. You have the clerk collector report and the treasurer's report in your packets. Are there any questions or discussion on those?
The only thing that, I talked to Marcy just real quickly about this, is that we've got a lot of money in, you know, money markets that have, you know, they get zero interest. She said she was gonna maybe have a meeting over there with them to, you know, I don't know, try to negotiate something. I do think with, you know, half a million dollars, if we could get more than .06 percent, there's gotta be some kind of short-term?
Right.
Bank notes that we can earn a little bit of money on. So, just something I think we need to keep an eye out for.
So, Marcy said she was going to?
Yeah, she said that she had planned on having a meeting with them and stuff.
Okay, good. Anything else on those reports? Chief's report?
Just a brief announcement for the general public. As we're aware, the pipeline operation is going through our community. Now, on Fridays, though, the pipeline will be conducting a meeting of their 500 employees at the county fairgrounds from about 7:00 till 9:00 a.m. That's every Friday till probably the fall season. It's their safety meeting, they bring all their workers together, and they're actually using the grandstand seating. So, we notified the schools because it will have an effect on the last, next Friday of the school bus routes. Yeah, we're, guesstimation, maybe 500 vehicles associated with that project.
We've got two Fridays left.
There are two bus runs?
Two Fridays left. Yeah, we don't get out until 8:00.
So, we notified the transportation director, but, and we'll be assisting getting the cars safely in and out, mostly out of there, but we will see an influx of a lot of traffic. Just let the community aware of it. The pipeline, that operation, they bring all the workers together once a week, and they pick the fairgrounds because of space, and they can't even hold that many people really on the inside, so they're using the grandstands. But it is gonna, you know, people are gonna see cars and vehicles, and it's, you know, as we can tell, the operation of the pipeline running from Indiana all the way down to Livingston County is a mass operation, and it involves hundreds and hundreds of people that are associated with it. So, when people see the traffic, don't be alarmed, it's just.
Well, hopefully they'll stop and buy a couple of.
Well, I, we have notified the businesses and coffeehouses on Livingston Road, 'cause I noticed that they, they have noticed the pipeline operations coming through.
Stop and have lunch?
Yeah, we may, if I had a wagon, a food wagon, I know where I'd be parking it, but I, I don't think I'd get the permits in a week or a few days. I'm already just hanging doughnuts off the back of my swabs and trying to increase rate.
Gee, she's just trying to win the cookie thing again.
The cookie could go, you know, so, that's really all I have on the immediate update.
Thank you, Chief. Engineers' report?
I don't have anything there.
All right, we'll move on to old business, cyber insurance.
Okay, I don't know if, how many of you taken a look at the brochure for the materials that the insurance carrier preparing sent? And you would certainly want to do that. I'm prepared to give some preliminaries on it, but I wanted to say this, they did not send the actual policies. In other words, they sent a summary. So, I called and asked them to send me the policies themselves to look at, you know, take a look at what the actual policies are saying. A couple of things struck me about it, I kind of investigated, well, how many of our municipalities are doing this? What's, what's going on? It is certainly a growing concern, and there are a fair number of governmental entities that are obtaining this type of insurance. For the most part, they are a lot larger than Peatown. One of the reasons for that, you know, for that distinction is, is that the liability that you have right now for an improper release of private information. Example, we had one the other day where a FOIA request came into the village. In answering the FOIA request, they sent out documentation with some employees' birthdates, names, addresses, social security numbers were not redacted from the report. By, by error, it was just a clear error. When something like that happens, what we're required to do is give notice, you know, send out notices to, you know, everyone that the improper release was made. There's some formalities that go along with, with that. And that's one of the coverages that this insurance provides. It takes care of all of those things for you. And obviously, if you've got, you know, like a Target thing or something, if you've got 100 or 200 people to, to deal with, that can become a little bit expensive. Whereas here, we would have less exposure, in my opinion, there. I mean, part of that could be done ourselves. On the other hand, they also give, you know, what they call, I've forgotten the little catchword they have for it, but it's special cyber attorney advice. They have cyber attorneys that are online that advise, you know, you how to go. Lot of it is public relations to, they do some coverages on those, on those things. So, if there is an improper release in that, that side, you do get some benefits. Now, the premium rate for, I think it's a million, coverage is a little bit under $2,000 a year. For doubling that, 2 million, it's 3,000 and some dollars a year. However, what also struck me, there's a $10,000 retainer, in other words, a $10,000 deductible, which is pretty steep. My assessment would be, you know, you can never tell. I, I'm not so concerned about, you know, some of the other examples they gave where hackers hacked into our police records, which is that, that kind. That seems kind of way out there to me at, at this point. So, I'm looking at it primarily from the liability side, you know, for improper releases from us. As Donna knows, we have, we have a policy on it. I think we follow it pretty, pretty well. And I think the, I'll put it this way, I think our risk of exposure is small. But the premium is not high, I mean, it's, you know, under 2,000.
So, would they cover?
And they have a $10,000 retainer.
Yeah, so would they cover, you know, if we released somebody's information and that person then sued the village?
Yes, yes.
They would cover the, that lawsuit?
The defense costs, yes.
The defense cost?
See, right now, there would be no, there's really no viable suit unless somebody, we still have our immunities that we have. You know, essentially, the village is not liable for tortious acts unless they're guilty of willful and wanton misconduct. Now, the new cyber protection laws, privacy protection laws, have put notice requirements on all of us. In other words, we've, we've gotta follow a policy to protect everybody's information, and if there is a, you know, improper release, then we have to take certain actions, notifications and that. Now, most of the governmental bodies have also added, when they have done that with regards to employees, they have paid for things such as contacting all the credit agencies and having the, the appropriate warning, you know, put on there, and, you know, that, that kind of thing. Which is, you know, somewhat of a cost, but it's not, it's not great.
No.
So, you're gonna have to, I, I think it's coming, everybody is warning of more laws placing more obligations on us, you know, in the future for, you know, not maintaining appropriate firewall, you know, all the stuff that we can supposedly do. But right now, there are really not, there really isn't anything that I would be concerned about.
So, let me ask you this quick, so if somebody did sue us for improper release and we don't have this insurance, are we covered under a general liability policy that we have?
I, yeah, I'm not sure about the general liability policy, 'cause I haven't looked at the exclusions a long time, to say the truth. Right, I haven't seen it a good while, so that would be.
We're covered under immunity.
Yeah, it would be, I would expect we would be, you know, but whether they have an exclusion or anything, I don't know, and what their, what their coverages are. But I'm suspecting that we do have, you know, coverage for some of the things that would be also covered here.
It's a new type of insurance?
Yes, it is.
Is what it really comes down to, and they are out pushing it to all of the different government, you know, bodies out there. Has the school looked at this at all?
We haven't been approached, as far as I know.
Okay.
Yeah, some of the schools have, they have some strict, very strict rules with regard to student records in particular. And there are suits from time to time by parents against the school districts for release of what they call personally identifiable information regarding a student. Any release of that is a, you know, a legal violation, and parents sometimes bring actions on, on that part. So, the, the school has a different class of records there that are protected by, you know, numbers of statutes. But I, my own assessment of it, I think that it does provide some coverages for you that you probably, you know, wouldn't have under the other one, primarily because they, those are damage and claims policies. In other words, they don't pay us unless we're, there's actual damage. Here, one of the things that they're doing is handling, handling it for you, a PR kind of thing?
Yeah.
To a great extent. And I'm not sure with the $10,000 deductible and the size of the village, that it's worth the 1,900 bucks a year.
Yeah.
But, you know.
I think one of the things, not just personal information release, but with the accepting credit cards now, anybody could hack in, but we do that all through the state of Illinois, EPAY, so that we wouldn't have anybody's information here in those.
They have liabilities on them that have applied on us.
That is my understanding, that's why we went this way. It's a little bit cumbersome, but it's a protection for the village.
Yeah, I say we don't look into this any further.
I agree.
I think it's something that we tabled for future consideration years, once stuff is rolled in.
Well, I think, you're gonna, you're gonna review your insurance, you know, basically on a yearly basis anyway, so, I mean, if the trustees feel like this is something that we're gonna pass on right now, but in a year, when we're talking about insurance, I'm sure they're gonna bring it back to the table again. And, you know, they may do some, a lot of tweaking, you know, with the type of coverage too, since it is, you know, a relatively new type of coverage, so.
Well, I, and I will, I will be getting the full policies because I called and they're, they're sending them to me.
And if we go to renew, we might get a better rate, if we roll in at that time, I'll post it out.
Well, I didn't see, I, I'm not seeing a huge exposure there for you.
We, we just, it wasn't too long ago that it was, so I'm, I'm a senator, maybe.
So, it's, my.
And they'll probably come up with some new stuff, because other people are pushing cyber insurance. They may up coverages in, in that respect with the insurance that we have.
We're open to the risks that we have, that already happen. Right. So, it's my understanding the board wants to, at this point in time, we're going to not pursue the cyber insurance, but we are open to looking at it in the future. I don't think we need a motion? No. In regards to that. Okay, let's move to new business. Item A, special event, Peatown Car Club request for 28 annual car show, street closures and amplifier permit on July 25th, 2015, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Hey, Todd?
Hi.
Todd Sandberg here, from the Car Club.
Oh, there's not that many in this area.
Oh, look at that!
Now, I'm gonna keep it kind of short and sweet. It's been 28 years, we're kind of gonna run the same program we have every other year, with the exception of Carter. Just gonna be a car show downtown. It'd be on Saturday, July 25th, registration from 11:00 to 4:00, shows approximately over about 7:00. And the only real change for this year is anybody that free registers will save $5 on a registration fee.
We're closing Main Street, Main, Second, so it'd be Main from Second to First?
Yeah.
Main all the way from the tracks?
Yeah, Railroad, yeah, Railroad Street to First.
And then Second Street?
Second Street to Crawford.
Crawford, and then North Street?
And then North Street, yeah, Railroad Street to First.
First.
Todd, is this the same as the last couple of years, are they gonna allow the open alcohol? I think Chief's probably waiting to ask it.
I think we forgot something.
Yeah.
Actually, we were looking for that also, you just didn't fill out the paperwork for that, I don't believe.
Mm-mm.
But we did.
So, this is, we got time?
Yeah, next meeting, we'll fill it out for next meeting.
Yeah, I'll just stop in and get the paperwork.
So, we'll, we'll address that at the next meeting?
Yeah, it's fine.
I'll motion for approval on this.
Second. Motion by Trustee Forsythe, seconded by Trustee Hupkey.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes. Thank Todd.
Yep, thank you.
All right, ordinance.
I just wanted to make sure that that motion included the amplifier.
The motion included the amplifier also, yes. Ordinance approving a variance for allowable signage at 209 East Main Street, Greasy Cheek Auto. This was discussed by the board.
It was actually approved, I think, at the last board meeting. This is the formal ordinance that, that does it. You'll see it permits the placement of a 10-by-28 mural sign on the west side of the building, 209 Main, which is where it was.
Motion.
This would be ordinance number 15-06. Motion by Trustee Forsythe, seconded, seconded by Trustee Hack.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
And Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Yes. Next item, ordinance, amend village ordinance to create a new standing committee, Community Development Committee. This is the committee that was approved at the May 11th meeting, just amending the ordinance. Is it an amendment to the ordinance?
Yes, it is an amendment to the ordinance that adds this as a standing committee right below the currently existing Economic Development Committee, and so it will fall right in the ordinance book at 3775 and 3366.
Would this be a new ordinance number, or would it follow?
Yes. It's the same as the new ordinance.
So, it'd be ordinance number 15-07. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Jones, seconded by Trustee Hupkey.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes. Item D, resolution, request for a fence variance for a five-foot privacy fence, Josephine Duffy, 627 East Walnut Street. Hi, Mrs. Duffy.
Hi.
You wanna step up? Um, just so, in your packet, trustees, you'll see some pictures. I went out, met with Mrs. Duffy, and took some pictures. This privacy fence would go along the back property line of the residence. The, behind the property is a farm field, which goes from the back of the property line to Beecher Blacktop. So, there is no other residences behind her. To the east is a existing chain link fence?
Correct.
Because that's, the house to the east would be the corner house at Walnut and Hawthorne.
It's not actually the corner house.
But it's?
It's kind of.
Kind of, yeah. It's not on the corner, but it's the first house on Hawthorne, facing Hawthorne. And then on the other side, to the west, is another existing chain link fence on that property.
Correct.
So, what is the variance?
The variance is for a privacy fence.
Is this because you don't have the gap?
Yeah.
Correct.
So, that's.
That, that is the only thing that triggers the variance.
What triggers it again?
It's a privacy fence, so there's no gap?
Oh.
Between the slats. And the reason for the privacy fence request was?
Because there's weeds that grow, it's right at the corner of the farm property, the farmer can't till that, so the weeds will grow all along that section back into the property.
I'll motion.
I have a question. Is there any reason why you didn't go for the six foot, not the five?
I have trees going back there, I have villains for trees.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions? Motion by Trustee Forsythe to adopt Resolution 15-R05.
Second.
Resolution regarding a variance for the allowable fencing at 627 East Walnut Street, seconded by Trustee Hupkey.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Yes. Item E, discussion regarding the Crawford Avenue, Route 50 and Howard Street intersection. At a couple meetings, or I think it was the last committee of the whole meeting, maybe, we had a resident here expressing some concern, and that was after, there was a, an event at the new fire pit, and there was quite a few motorcycles, and the resident was just concerned about the traffic at that intersection. And that intersection's always been a tough intersection, just because of the way it's laid out with Crawford and Route 50, and then just offset with Howard Street right by Tony's. So, often when somebody's coming off of Howard Street, somebody's coming off of Crawford, and there's just, you know, all sorts of issues there. I had a discussion with the chief and with the engineer last week, you know, regarding this, and I see Lisa's here from the fire pit, and we're not, we're not picking on you. Because we want you to be successful.
No, I seen the engineers on this, and I figured I would, I would find out what's going on.
And I was, and I wanted to try to get in and stop and see, and it's just been, been crazy. But we're just trying to figure out what we can do, you know, to make that a better corner. Go ahead, Chief.
As, as you mentioned, we're in this discussion with the engineer, and we are, I talked to Bob today from Streets, and we went out and, planning on yellow marking some areas to keep the cars from parking on the right-of-way, because there are signs that say thou shall not park on the right-of-way, all over Route 50. So, and, and we're gonna yellow mark some areas by the food store, the feed store for?
The pet store.
The pet store, thank you. And then over on the other side by Tony's, just in front of his area, and also that pole by your building, mark where the white paint is, we're gonna refresh that with yellow, so we keep there, make sure the cars stay out of visibility. And we're looking at, talking to our delivery drivers that show up out there to keep them off the right-of-way, because technically, they shouldn't be there anyway. Plenty of place to unload, but when you get the delivery trucks and a couple semis, you can get a lot of visual blocking of that corner. We did have an accident last Sunday, not attributed to anything with the intersection or traffic or anything, just a car decided that that stop sign by Tony's wasn't important, and just went through it and smacked into a car going northbound. Had nothing to do with visibility, just driver error. And so, you know, there's, nothing can stop those things from happening. They run into each other on Beecher Road and Route 50, like, you know, we know there's nothing blocking their visuals, but the cars just drop from the sky in front of people. And so, but we are making some recommendations to try to mark the road and keep the right-of-ways open so we can have visibility, and step by step, I mean.
What about, there was a concern that people park in Tony's lot and then just shoot right onto 50 from there. Is there anything we can do, or putting barriers there?
What we're talking, you know, the, the barriers belong to. Well, we're talking, you know, the barriers belong to the landlord there. I mean, we haven't talked to the person owns the property that Tony's sits on, which would be the cranker...
Mudrow.
Mudrow Cranker. Yeah, but Mary.
Yes.
So we had an approach to her, and talked to her, trying to see if they can put the blockades or some, to keep the traffic from pulling into the parking of Tony's and exiting straight out of Route 50, not using the Howard Street stop sign.
I mean, is that legal to do that? I mean, is there a law?
Well, technically, there's a law that says you can't avoid a...you can't go through a private property to avoid a traffic control device. You can't go around it and zip out, because similar to the gas station corners, you can't zip around the gas station, go through it to avoid a traffic control device, you can't.
But you still have traffic exiting the gas station just to the north of Tony's.
Yes.
That's an ingress and egress.
Yeah, there's a lot of cars that can show up at once.
But the...but that parking lot at Tony's is not supposed to be an in-and-out spot.
No, it's not supposed to be...and most of the cars, I haven't seen, and I don't see cars backed in with their rear face at 50. I always see them pointed with their front facing Route 50. I don't see them come off Route 50 and just shoot into a parking spot.
It's just a concern about them taking the easy way out.
And we're gonna...we'll talk to the landowner. I did talk to the renter at Tony's Pizza, yeah, and...but those all belong to Mary Mudrow, and...
So you're gonna approach Mary?
I'll talk to Mary, see what temporary to keep them from exiting, those spots right there by Tony's, so that they just don't pull out of Route 50 and offer more confusion. It's, like you said, it's a different intersection.
It has...it's always been a tough intersection. Did you have anything to add, Lisa, or...
The only thing I said to the engineers is that I do have that house, stay. I do have that house, and I'm tearing it down.
Step up.
I am tearing it down. And just figure out a way of making me be able to use that as a parking spot. I mean, it's long, it's narrow, I know that. But there's got to be a way.
Why can't you use it as a parking spot?
Um, would you like to explain this? Because this is what I was told from George Gray, that you said that I couldn't use because it wasn't wide enough for it.
Well, when I looked at it, we looked at the turnaround, it was really the thing that was very difficult. When I looked at it, it looked to me like you need to do, you know, a five-point or seven-point turn to make the turnaround, you know, back and forth. So that was my main concern. There is a way to park cars, either on an angle or parallel, you know, with like a one-way aisle, but then just the turnaround for people coming to your business is what I thought was the problem.
But is there a possible solution there that we can...
Maybe a, I don't know, a valet service where, you know, they're more able to do that type of turnaround.
Were you gonna use that as a valet lot, or was it more self-parking? Was your...
Well, I have valet right now.
Okay.
For people across the street, but no one uses it.
Okay.
No one wants to use valet. I mean, I got some kid that's sitting out there from 4:00 till 9:00, and he gets two cars, and otherwise everyone's crossing over 50 on their own.
Right, and which is another concern, because...
And the thing is, is people don't want people in their cars.
Right, no. Right, right.
I mean, and it's free. I mean, I'm not charging them to have this kid. I mean, it's free service. I'm paying the kid myself, but I'm finding that it's not even worth paying him, and the kid's bored out of his mind. He's like, "Lisa, can I clean something, please?" You know?
Well, I would really like to take a hard look, you know, at that area and figure out a way that we could do self-parking there. I mean, I think that's...
I think it works, Steve, because I think if you pull in straight north and turn left, just make a 90-degree turn. I took pictures, and there's a full-size pickup truck at the edge of the property, and there's...whoops, there's plenty of room behind it. I think we need to go out there with Robinson and...
Yeah, well, let's...we'll take a look at it.
I think we can make it work.
Yeah, I wanna make it work.
Yes.
I mean, and then if we get that back there, I could make the front as motorcycle parking or small vehicle, you know?
Which would fit much better.
Yeah, because you don't have these big trucks. I mean, I hate pulling out. I hate pulling out of my own place. I know that, but as in a small vehicle, especially when I got a truck next to me. So if you make it small vehicles and motorcycles only in the front, and in the back you've got trucks and everything else, it would...
What is the status of the house?
We got the gas shut down. Now we're just waiting to be able to do it. I mean, now it's more our timeframe. Electric's been shut off, water is a joke. But we gotta do some kind of clamping or something when we tear it down ourselves or something, I don't know. And then, so I'm just waiting, you know, for my friends to be able to help me and tear it down and stuff, so. I would say in the next month it should be down.
Do you have something?
Doesn't the zoning have to be changed on that lot from residential to...
It's commercial already.
It is already commercial?
It's already commercial.
Good.
All three, for some reason, my lot, my house, my place, that house behind there, and then the house north of me, is all commercial, all three of those spots are.
Very good.
I think the only concern I have with the parking lot is we're gonna have to either fence or landscaping some sort of screening between there and the house to the west of it, just so you have a buffer, so...
Oh, I think that's required.
Yeah, I mean, between any commercial and residential...
Yeah, I have...we know we're gonna have to put up at least an eight-foot fence or six-foot fence, I don't remember what your ordinance is, but like by the house area, we want to put up at least an eight-foot fence, and then that way they won't have light shining in and stuff like that. And then down towards the end, we'll see if it's gonna affect anyone back there, whether we go six or eight, so. And I've already talked to Terry, the one that's next door to my dad's place, so we've already talked about it, and he says just don't...I guess he already put some fencing up, he says, "Don't take my fencing down." So I says, "Don't worry, we'll make it nice whatever we do," so.
And then that'll be paved, or...
Eventually. It'd have to take a couple of years before I could do that, because there's a crawl space, and you gotta put gravel in it, and you gotta let it settle. Because even like in the front, the gravel, I've already filled it twice, where they had the water running go through. I've already had to fill that twice, just to keep it so it keeps until I can even...
Until it gets compacted.
Yeah, so it would be about two years before I would be able to, according to what a couple of the guys that do asphalt say they do.
But I mean, that is part of our code that...
Yeah, I mean, I think...
The business, commercial has to be paved.
Right.
I mean, I know there's some violations in town, but...
Right. Unless we're able, you know, to give some kind of temporary variance.
Well, yeah, I mean, I agree, you need to wait, but I mean, I'm just saying...
Right, no, exactly. No, we would have to be stipulated that it would be done, and...
So much time.
Yeah, right.
And that'd be...yeah, it's just I...we have, it's a crawl space, and it's a really kind of ugly, funky-looking crawl space, so that would take time before it actually settled down, so. But yeah, I would want it paved anyway, to be honest with you.
I mean, it'd be a lot easier to maintain in the winter.
Oh, yeah. I don't wanna have to regravel every year, it's silly. But that's all I have to say about it. I mean, I have that, use it, you know?
I have a question. When I look at the property lines on the northwest corner, it looks like there's a five-foot strip that's a different pin number.
We're in the process of...
Is that part of it?
You're talking on the northwest...okay, you're talking by the house that's north of me, right?
Yeah.
Right behind his house? He is actually on my dad's property, five feet into our property line.
Okay.
And we are in the process of doing legal procedures to get his fence length off of there.
Okay. Yeah, I just saw...I saw how it's broken up. It's a certain width, and then north, it looks like it's narrower, and there's that extra...I was curious if you were getting that too.
Well, he got a bad survey.
Okay.
He did get a bad survey, and he doesn't really wanna work with us, so we have to do the legal process in order to get the fence off. Me personally, I'd like to just go and tear it down and say goodbye, but I can't do that. So that's what that is, there is an extra five feet.
Okay.
And we've had it, we've surveyed, so...
Not to add to your plate, but I've seen this on a lot of job sites. Do we wanna look into some kind of temporary fencing around the house while it's being demoed? You mentioned a crawl. We don't want somebody falling into that.
Well, as soon as we take it down, we're putting gravel in right away.
Okay, I mean, it's...
Yeah, no, there's gonna be gravel, and if there isn't...
But you're gonna have to get a demo permit.
Okay.
You have to be demoed, and I'm sure that in that process, there may be a requirement...
Yeah, nothing...
No, there may be a requirement for some kind of...I understand what you're saying, some kind of fencing, not a permanent structure, but...
Yeah, it's got T-bar's underneath it.
Right.
Very...
No, as soon as we take it down, we're gonna be putting gravel down right away, and if it's not done that same day, then we'll make sure that there's something barricaded against it.
I used to wanna see Little Johnny or somebody in the...
I wouldn't either.
I mean, I didn't even think about it until you mentioned it.
Well, we had the same problem with the water.
I'm sure that's a demo permit, I'm sure they're gonna take a look at that, too.
Yeah, we had the same problem with the water line. We had to put something down to protect it from kids, so. Any other questions?
Steve, I got a question about that intersection. On the south...at Crawford and 50, on the southwest corner, does the village have any ordinance regarding trees that get to the point, like that pine tree that's there, you can't see around it in a school bus, let alone in a car or anything else? Does the village have any ordinance that when a tree becomes to that point at the base, does it have to be trimmed up to a certain point to allow better visibility at that intersection?
Was it five feet off the sidewalk?
I think it's seven.
Seven off the sidewalk.
What's off the street?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
And we've got the same thing, like going into the entrance of the bus barn there. One of those trees is now out on the sidewalk, it's out on the village sidewalk, and it makes it very dangerous. I mean, we have to come, you have to inch up with the bus and look down the driveway, make sure nobody's coming out, because it's only one lane. I mean, there's a couple areas where there's some trees that...
We'll have to take a look at that and see if...
And the doctor's, whatever they're calling that now, the doctor's office down there at Corning and 50, that tree needs to have an accident with a chainsaw. Well, it's terrible. It's...
Let me get our code enforcement person.
Right, that's...right now, we're blanking the code enforcement area, and we're working on that also, so. And that's gonna be a discussion a little bit further down. Anything else on that? Okay. Item F, accept resignation and approve severance agreement of the village administrator. So in your packets, you have Exhibit A, the resignation and severance agreement, and the release of all claims. Is there any discussion?
Just...so, when does this agreement take effect, and what is the revocation period? Can you explain that to me?
The...which one are we talking?
We're talking about the resignation.
The resignation is effective on June 17, 2015, which is the expiration of his vacation essential.
Oh, okay. Right, so he's used up all of his vacation time.
Gotcha.
Which he had coming, you know, at some point in time, you know, when...so that takes us to that June the 17. And then at June the 17 is when the severance begins.
Did you put this together, Jim?
The...that is the one that I don't have with me. This is the one that is attached to his employment contract.
Yes.
Yes. The answer to that is yes.
Okay. There's no pitfalls or...
No, not at all. As a matter of fact, you have a...an extremely solid and much more conservative employment contract with managers and termination and severance than virtually any other village I know. Good.
I make the motion to accept the resignation.
And the severance.
And the severance agreement.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Jones, seconded by Trustee March.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Hocky?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Yes. Item G, accept resignation of Stephen Cross trustee position. Just in your package, you have a letter, "Dear trustees, due to my recent election as interim Peatone Village President, I hereby resign my elected position as Peatone Village trustee. I look forward to serving the village and working with the residents, the village board, village staff employees, and all of the other taxing bodies and organizations in and around the village of Peatone as we move forward in the days and years to come. Goodbye." Me.
So move to accept resignation.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee March, seconded by Trustee Jones.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hocky?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
It's Lester. Sorry?
Lester.
Yes.
And Mr. Cross.
Do I vote on this one?
No.
Yeah, this is his last vote, he's still a trustee.
Oh, yeah, he's voting as trustee.
Yes. It's so confusing, so confusing. So this leads to item H. At this time, we do have a vacant trustee's position on the board. This position would be until the next consolidated election, or it would be a two-year term, or the fulfillment of until the next consolidated election, which is almost two years.
Yes, that is correct.
And then at that time, that next consolidated election will have three, four-year terms and one, two-year term on the ballot. So anybody, and this is out to the residents of the village of Peatone, anybody who is a resident of the village and meets the qualifications, if you have any interest in serving on the village board, I'd ask that you submit a letter of intent or interest to the board. There's really not an application, it's more of explain, you know, why you feel qualified to do this and why you want to do this. And what I would like to do then is sit down with the board in a closed session, go over all of the letters that come in, have a discussion as a board, and then decide how to proceed from that point, whether we're not gonna narrow it down, do interviews, or however the board decides to proceed. It is ultimately my appointment to be ratified by the board, but I do want the input of the board into that decision. Okay? So anybody that would like to submit a letter, I'd like to have the letters submitted by the next meeting, which would be June the...again, it's the...
June 8.
8. So any letters submitted by June the 8 will then go into consideration by the board the evening of that meeting. And we'll get that, I think the press is going, we'll get that to the press tomorrow. I was gonna say, questions in the press, but I don't think we have any press here. Trustees, in your packet, you have a letter from independent inspections. Independent inspections has been bought by a larger company called Safebuilt and Safebuilt offers a lot more services than independent inspections previously offered, including zoning administration, code enforcement, various different things. I spoke with one of the vice presidents of Safebuilt and they are going, we're gonna try to set up a meeting. What I would like to do is do it... Do it as a committee of the whole meeting, so all of the trustees can be part of that discussion, but I think if they can be of assistance to us, especially in the zoning end of it, and possibly even the code enforcement end of it, before we, you know, make a decision to hire our own employee, I would like to see what they have to offer, you know, in that regard. The code enforcement position, you know, what I would like AOC to do is look at the job description or the ordinance that we have in place for code enforcement. Right now, we were looking at that at the last special meeting and that is really pretty vague and I think we need to take a look at that and rewrite that, so we have a clear understanding of what code enforcement is supposed to be doing for the village. Trustee Hack brought us some samples from other villages, or at least one sample from another village that I thought was very good, so we'll make sure that AOC has that and we'll have that discussion. But I'd like to get that in place before we, you know, pursue the code enforcement. We do have probably six or seven grass complaints out there right now. Today, I drove around the village, you know, and looked at the ones that had come in. There's one on South Street, which is a foreclosure, there's one on Blaine Street, which I think is a foreclosure. There was one supposedly out on Barton, I couldn't find it, so I think that probably got cut. So there's, I mean, not anything, you know, hugely pressing, but we do wanna try to stay on top of those, so we're gonna try to get together and I'm gonna try to write a couple of letters, you know, and get sent out to the ones that are out there and try to get those moving forward while we're in the process of hiring a code enforcement or deciding who's gonna do our code enforcement for us.
So what is the AOC?
AOC would be, all the committee meetings are gonna be Wednesday, June the 10th, that's the next scheduled committee meeting night. So before then, you know, we'll talk with the chairman of the committees and we'll get agendas, come up with agendas for all of those committees and figure out time slots, how those are gonna fall, you know, that evening and get those agendas posted.
Start at six?
I think we probably start at six, yes. So we've got AOC, we've got police, we've got streets. I don't think we have anything for building right now that I'm aware of. So those would be the, at least the three that we definitely wanna meet. And then possibly the, the community development committee also that evening for, yeah. Anything else from the trustees?
So the, the village administrator position has been posted?
It has been posted. That went to all three of the places that the board decided it should go to, that was all done last week.
Okay.
And then, and then also the local papers also.
And the colleges?
And the colleges also, it was sent to. And we are gonna, I wanna do, wanna go into a closed session here tonight, just for a brief minute to talk to the trustees in regards to specific personnel, too. Do have an announcement. State Representative Kate, Kate Clunin will be here doing some satellite office hours on Monday, June the 22nd, from 12 to 2. That's for any resident who's having a problem or needs assistance with a state issue, they can come in. There's also a phone number on the flyer here, which we'll get to the newspaper and we need to get this on our website also, if we can.
Okay.
Yeah, if we can.
Okay, well...
Send it to them. I think there's a...
What's the date?
Uh, June the 22nd, Monday, June the 22nd, from 12 to 2. But you can set an appointment, you know, directly with them by calling the number on this flyer. Trustees wanna grab a flyer, they can, or anybody in the audience that would like one can have one also. Anything else?
Steve, I just wanna say thank you to the American Legion and all the parties involved.
Yes.
With the Memorial Day service. I mean, despite the weather, they had a heck of a turnout and the service was awesome.
Yes, I, I wanted to say that also, thank you, Kevin. It was a, it was a tremendous service, it really was, and I was really impressed with the turnout from the community. With the weather, the way it was, you know, we didn't know if it was gonna rain or not. It rained a little bit earlier that morning and for a brief second, when the wind shifted and started gusting about 30 miles an hour, I thought everybody was gonna get drenched, but then it just kinda calmed down and, you know, it was beautiful, it was a, it was a beautiful trip.
And the speaker stayed till the very last. There were like maybe five people left in the hall and he answered anybody's questions. He was very gracious.
He did a, he did a fantastic job. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. The village, the code and...
Code enforcement?
Yes. Is he the person that we would call if we have a complaint about a piece of property?
Yes.
And until he takes his position, who do we talk to?
Just call the hall, call me, you know, we're trying to field those calls and trying to handle them the best that we can.
Okay, so just call and answer?
Yeah, if you call, if you call the village hall...
We'll write it down.
They'll write it down and they'll give me a note and...
Okay.
I'll add it to my folder and, you know, do the best that I can trying to get it resolved before we get the code enforcement officer in place or whoever's doing code enforcement.
Cause we've called several times and you've just been pretty much told, you have to wait till they hire somebody, you have to wait till they hire somebody. And it's kinda come, becoming a health issue.
Okay.
So just call and ask, leave you a message?
Yeah, do that and just do that in the morning and I will, I'll call you tomorrow and talk to you.
Well, the thing is, I'm at work and I worked, I can't get calls at work, so I can call you and leave you the message and then call back later in the afternoon or...
Okay, we can do that. Just leave me, leave me a good time to call you.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I, I try not to miss meetings, but when I do, I always watch you on TV. Is it a PAL issue about your, your speaking? Because on TV, you can barely hear your voices.
Oh, really?
And then if that air conditioner or heater kicks in, it's done. And we can't hear, you know, anything you're saying.
Yeah, I know that, that used to be...
You can put microphones on the table or...
That used to be, well, they've got the microphones in the ceilings, you know, they did that several years ago. There's a button right above me, there's a button there, there's a button there, and then there's a button right above you guys, you know, out there. I could ask them if they can take a look at it.
I know when I watch Moniz, you can hear everything they're saying, even the cameras are on everybody, you know, and it's like...
They have somebody operating the camera there, they don't have a fixed camera.
But it's hard to hear you and when you're having, you know, discussion, you wanna hear what everybody has to say and...
I, I guess we'll all try to do a better job of speaking up, you know, that may help a little bit. I don't like to yell, but... But no, we'll all try to do a better job of speaking up and we'll ask them and they're watching us right now, so if they can just take a look at it and see if there's any way they can tweak, you know, the sound at all.
Right.
That'd be appreciated.
Thank you.
No problem. Anyone else?
When you're looking at land to the west, I don't know what happened, but Art Ferraris and Lucille Ferrari own practically all the land and they have both passed away, so they have two sons and a daughter.
Okay.
The attorney there is Dick Kavanaugh, outer jaw air.
Thank you, sir.
See what the situation is.